He's doing good. We'll go ahead and get started today. Just to note, before we get started, when we're going to go into the Board of Commissioners first, take up an item under the Finance Committee recess and then go back to the original agenda. So with that, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. There's also an automatic external defibrillator that's available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, roll call please. Here. We will go to the Finance Committee, and item two under there is a resolution to approve and authorize the 15th Supplement Agreement with the Omaha Douglas Building, Public Building Commission, the City of Omaha and the County of Douglas, Nebraska. And here today is Mr. Paul Cohen from the Omaha Building Commission to talk to us about this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for allowing me to go first. My wife will appreciate that more than you know. This morning, I come requesting your concurrence in the 15th Supplemental Agreement, which adds an additional $10 million bond to the total already on the books. That 10 million will be used, the 6.4 of the 10, will be used to complete the Hall of Justice project, which came in overestimate by a significant number. Most of that related to the HVAC unit that has to be replaced in the hall. That came in significantly higher primarily because of the shortage of skilled trade labor in our community. The good news is we have a low unemployment rate. The bad news is we have a low unemployment rate. And so that has jacked up construction costs along the way. The balance, the 3.6, approximately 3.6 million left, will be used for other capital improvement programs, some of which have been identified, some have not. None of them have been prioritized yet, and so that'll leave us, I think, sufficient money going forward over the next three or four years for any capital improvement programs. We ask your approval.
Is there any other conversation? We do need a motion to approve. Is there a second? Commissioner Morgan.
Paul, appreciate, you know, you coming here and Commissioner Borgeson changing our agenda a little so you could speak. Just quickly, you know, I talked before your committee about trying to help the assessor's office with some of their needed improvements so we could put them into one office. I just wondered if there's a chance, and I forget the exact number, Joe Lorenz can help me, but I recall around 800,000 or thereabouts.
Eight hundred thousand to a million?
To a million dollars for her improvements to get that office on the fourth floor. I wondered if there's a chance you could tell us that you think that that could happen. I'd really like to see us be able to do that some way, somehow, I know it's really necessary and needed.
Commissioner.
And I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Respectfully, every time I say "I think," I remind that I'm not paid to do that. The process is a little convoluted, but not terrible. The short answer to your question is anything is possible now that there is some money in the bank, which there wasn't when you came to talk to us. But the process for capital improvement present in the lease agreement is the capital improvement request come before the Capital Improvement Committee, on which you have, the county has two representatives, Mr. Lorenz and Mr. Leahy, and Mr. Bloomingdale. Actually, you have three, are members of the Capital Improvement Committee, and then there's representation from the city as well. And we talk about everything that has come to us as a request for capital money, and then those things are prioritized, brought to the Building Commission, and that's part of the budget. That process will begin in February, late February, early March, when we'll set those priorities. I've had conversation with Ms. Bodyato last week, Thursday and Friday. We understand her needs. We have some concerns about how that all fits on a floor plate that isn't quite designed for 24,000 square feet. But I guess the short answer to your question is it certainly would be considered in view of other projected changes in the building that may come about moving forward over the next three, four months.
Okay, and I don't know if any other commissioners have any comments about this, but it's just something I think that could really help us significantly because we know we have a serious problem in the efficiency and the operation of our office that I really want to try to be helpful on because I know how important that office is to all of us, whether it's the city, county, schools.
Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. I was hoping this conversation wouldn't wander over to the proposal for Ms. Bodyato. This is about completing a much-needed construction project in the courthouse. The decision about the register of deeds and assessor is another decision for another day. I still believe it should be the county's decision. The county has never voted on it. Nobody has brought it to the county for their consideration. I do not consider it to be a Building Commission responsibility. I consider it an internal remodel. So I really wish we could separate that out and not confuse the issues. We've got to get this air handling system replaced in the courthouse. It's only logical to do these overdue renovations at the same time, and that's what this is about.
Thank you, Commissioner Duda. Commissioner Morgan.
The only thing I was talking about is that is the important part, but there is extra money in this. And that's what I was hoping, Commissioner Duda, that we could at least look at that extra money that's there to help do this because I know trying to run her office the way it's running is not, and I don't mean to say something negative toward Diane Bodyato, but it's pretty difficult to run your office. Now, I can stand to be corrected by Diane Bodyato about that, but I just know the pleas of her people trying to be together. That's all I'm trying to resolve. And Commissioner Kavanaugh, you know we don't have that extra money, and Joe Lorenz knows.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I agree with Commissioner Morgan and recognize that, you know, there's work to be done there. You know, I'm also interested in the strategic planning going forward to enable Diane Bodyato to do her job, which has been, you know, kind of a consolidation that she wasn't consulted on. But now she's trying to do the best she can to administer it, and we'll do the best we can to facilitate that. I'm interested in planning future consolidations like that, which could impact on what we're talking about today a little bit relative to the county attorney and the city prosecutor's function, which are going to be, you know, affected in part by this renovation that we're doing. But that said, I guess I agree with Commissioner Duda. That's a discussion probably for a different time and day. What we're talking about here today, I think, is pretty straightforward renewal of a longstanding and very successful, frankly, working agreement between Douglas County and the City of Omaha to facilitate the maintenance and upkeep and modernization of the facility that we all share. And I have particular historic interest in that. And so I think for today's purposes, if we could concentrate just on the substance of the resolution, which I support, and move forward, we have a lot of work to do on exactly what you're talking about. And I'm very interested in working with you and with Diane Bodyato and the other interested parties. Though, you know, frankly, we talked about earlier this morning in our Administrative Services Committee meeting, and we'll continue those discussions and get that done. That said, I'd like to see us get this done and move on.
And I plan to support this. Claire.
No other comments? There is a motion and a second. Please vote.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, for allowing me to come on. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I would now ask for a motion to recess the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and go into the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization.
Second.
Roll call. I mean, sorry, please vote. Now we'll do a roll call for the Board of Equalization. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, October 6th and Tuesday, October 13th, 2015. And item B, call for a meeting and set October 27th, 2015, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. There are motion to approve A and B. Any questions or comments? Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chambers wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we have one resolution approving the applications for tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the county treasurer. Is there a motion to approve that resolution and adjourn?
Yes, Commissioners, we have an executive session for litigation for the Board of Equalization, so we'll ask you to adjourn into that.
So without, just a resolution, just a motion to approve the resolution and then go into executive session for litigation purposes? Okay. Was that the seconders' motion? All right. Please vote.[767.81]
Move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call, please. Here. Item one, approval of the Minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, September 15, 2015. Their motion to approve. Please vote. Citizen comments. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none. I know we don't have a lot of time with our director this morning, so Mark, if you want to just do a few highlights and then you can be on your way.
Sure. Thank you very much. Mark Foxall, Director of Corrections. You have before you the monthly report for Department Corrections for September 2015. I will touch on the first enclosure, we're three months into the fiscal year, and remain under budget. And just a couple of highlights from enclosure number two from Community Corrections. Intensive outpatient program, co-occurring disorders with the CMHC, that program is going well. Our reconnect program, we've talked about in the past, is going well. And the Corrections Network TV program, putting educational program in all 28 housing units is operational. We're still working out the bugs. We're very excited about that program also. On the personnel side of the House, September 28, we started a class of 20 new recruits, and November 2 is their graduation date. I'll be sending information out to all of you in hopes that you can participate or attend the graduation, which I believe we're going to do here because of the large size of the class and the family and friends, so we'll do it in the LC legislative chambers here as well. Population wise, we had 1,264 admissions for the month. We had 1,282 releases. And our ADP, or our average daily population, was 1,102. We saw increases in the U.S. Marshals population and the misdemeanor pretrial population. All other indicators, ICE, felony pretrial, female populations decreased. Just a quick run through of our enclosure number eight for mental health. We had significant numbers for last month, and they continue to go up. Thirty-seven psych assessments initial, 116 mental health assessments, 50 mental health temporary placements, referrals to community-based health services, outpatient psych, bed management was five, mental health and co-occurring disorder treatment programs, 273, mental health therapy, 27, long-term psych, too. If you take a look at the graphics on the succeeding couple of pages, it was a very, very, very busy month in terms of mental health at the Department of Corrections. And Anne's here, and I think it's one of the highest months that she's seen. So that issue can still continues to be a concern to us. But with the conversations that we've been having across a number of different fronts, I think there's certainly an increased awareness, and I believe there's moves being made incrementally in the right direction.
Any questions for Mark? Commissioner Rogers?
Yeah. Mark, put this in context. Your average daily population for the month was about 1,100. The total population of people with some type of diagnosis is 1,074. I was trying to put, so I'm trying to put that in context of who actually is in because of disorders, because we're housing them, because there's no place outside to place them. For instance, you got, say we got 700 or so on pretrial. So is, is, is some of the hindrance on who's sitting there pretrial-wise, because if we were to pretrial manage them, we don't have adequate mental health out there to accompany pretrial management? I'm just trying to get a context of that number, because just to get the number, 1,100 total average for the month, 1,074 is a, I don't know if that number speaks to is true. Is it, because that makes it seem dire, more dire than what it is?
Well, the more increase you see in the number of mentally ill or mental diagnoses coming in the door, that pretends an increase in your LOS, or the average length of stay. So that's going to increase your ADP. So the mentally ill tend to stay longer in corrections. A lot of some people come in with mental health diagnosis, and they'll enter a plea of not guilty, rather than enter another type of plea and be released the next day. So then they get on the docket, and they'll stay for, you know, 30, 60, 90 days as their case matriculates through the court system. And that certainly increases our average length of stay, and increases our bed days, and increases our ADP, average daily population. So it's not surprising to me that you begin to see the average length of stay increase when the mentally ill numbers, diagnosis begin to go up. And Anne's had a very, Anne's here, Anne Sales is here, my mental health director, has had a very busy month. And at the beginning of the month, last- had a very busy month, and at the beginning of the month, last month, told me the numbers were spiking. And in fact, we were talking about that just about 15 minutes ago, looking at the referrals to, for mental health and co-occurring disorders out into the community, and the actual people that we've been able to connect, and capacity is an issue. We've got so much coming in, there's just, you know, there's just insufficient capacity in the community to meet the demand that we're putting on the services out there.
So, let's say for the last, it looks like for the last two or three months, the census count, the average daily population is around like 77, 78 percent. And before that, I was looking at numbers like in the 70s. So, are we accrediting that to mental health, or, because it, or increased activity and outside with crime, whatever like that?
Anecdotally, I would tell you that the diagnoses with respect to mental, the mentally ill is exacerbating that number empirically. We'd have to dig down into it, and that's part of the conversations I'm having with University of Nebraska at Omaha, to set up a process whereby we can conduct that evaluation, so I can give you some definitive numbers.
Okay. Thanks.
No other questions or comments? Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Nope? Okay. Then is there a motion to adjourn out of the Board of Corrections?
I'd so move, Mark, let us know that date.
He didn't know where, but when you can.
I will send that out. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mark. Please vote. Now, we will go back into the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please. Here, item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, October 6, 2015, and item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, October 20, 2015.
So move for approval.
There a second? Please vote. We have the consent agenda, items A through K. Is there a motion to approve? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Just have a couple of questions for informational purposes. Item A, we have a bid rejection. I don't know that I've ever seen a bid rejection before, but I was just wondering if we could get a little background on that.
Eric Carlson, Douglas County Purchasing. Typically, in this case, just if you note in the, in the information there, we did a bid acceptance for all the items there underneath housekeeping. After we had done the acceptance, it was noted by one of the other vendors that was participating that it didn't appear that the one we recommended for that line item met the specification. So, we thought, obviously, in the best interest of the county, as well as the department, or the various vendors that were bidding on that particular item, in order for us to put it back out on the street to get proposals for items that met specifications, we had to reject that one item, because we had, we can't just, because it was already accepted by the board, we, in order, I guess, to basically go out and get new bids, we had to basically pull that one back.
And what was the discrepancy?
Just, it was that particular, the specifications on that item, I think it was toilet paper specifically, that, you know, because of the way the specifications were written, one of the vendors said, "Well, this item that you guys accepted didn't technically meet." Rather than kind of going, going the back and forth and getting into drama about toilet paper, we just thought it was best that we just go ahead and say, "Okay, right, no problem. We'll go ahead and clarify on the specifications and go ahead and rebid it." So, in order to do that, we need to reject that one item.
Okay. I have one other question. Thank you.
Yep.
On D, the agreement regarding the Medical Leave Act administration, Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Is this the one that we discussed at a previous meeting?
This was discussed in conjunction with the long-term disability out of Human Resources Committee back in May. Well, it was actually, the committee was before that date in May, and this board in May of 2015 accepted the proposal from Cigna for both long-term disability and FMLA. It's two separate contracts, so you've already approved the long-term disability, and this is the FMLA administration.
Okay. What's the term of this agreement?
It's a three-year agreement, and it's approximately $35,000 a year, based on, it's an amount per employee. There's also a $10,000 startup fee, if you will, which covers the takeover of some open FMLA cases that Cigna's going to take over for us through, like, a transition period, so that they're not just starting from a particular date, they're actually starting with open cases in FMLA.
And were we doing these in-house?
We were doing them in-house, yes. Each department kind of handled them within their departments, and then the HR department also handled some of them, or assisted those departments with questions.
Thank you.
That's it.
And Commissioner Craft?
Yes. And I have a question on number I and number K. They seem to be the same person. One were paying, and the other were referring to the risk manager. Can anybody explain? Are these the same, or are they different?
The tort claim payment is for physical damage to the vehicle. The, without reviewing it, it's going to be referred to our office. I have to take a look and see what the, what the actual claim that was filed was for. So, I can't tell you at this point whether it's the same, I can just tell you it's appropriate to approve the payment that's K, that's been fully vetted by the Risk Management Department.
Right. I was wondering if I was there by accident. A new claim. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
No other questions or comments? There is a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Please vote. I'm going to move two items around. Mr. James Parsons is here and needs to exit, so I'm going to let him come and give his recommendations for the Douglas County General Assistance Guidelines that we have, we're in the process of doing right now.
Good morning, Commissioners. Everybody knows I do a lunch program, and my lunch program provides agencies to reach out to the needy. And one of the problems with the agencies that we're having, nonprofits, is housing. And Douglas County has a Douglas County General Assistance Fund that allows $400 a month rent paid. And they give a $25 gift certificate, and then they're allowed to go to food stamps. The problem is, $400 a month is a very low price for apartment right now, because all the development of all these apartments throughout the city has actually lessened the low-income housing. And another thing in the Douglas County Assistance, once they get on the program, they cannot work. They get community service, which does not pay them nothing other than allowing them to get Douglas County Assistance and food stamps. Well, I would like to see if the board would either raise the $400 to $500 and allow the people who are in the program to work a certain amount of hours with pay, so they can provide a better way of living. This is sort of like putting these people in a jail. You know, they can't, the bus tickets only takes them to the job. They have no other money to help them do anything else except stay home and cook. One of the things I'd also like to see is, we need a better system to deal with these problems, because a lot of times, a lot of people get denied, and I just heard a comment on mental health. There's a lot of homeless people out there that are really mentally helped. One of the questions I ask people is, "Why don't you give them a job?" I say, "Come with me, look at these people, would you hire them?" And myself, I was a part of Douglas County Assistance because of, I lost my job with the agency that I was working at, Douglas County. And it's a very good program, but we just need to improve it a little bit. And the other thing is handicap parking. I don't know if you guys deal with this, but I had 10 heart attacks just about six months ago, triple bypass surgery. Well, I'm on a temporary disability parking. It is so sickening when I see handicapped people, elderly people, have to park other places and people take their spot. The fine is $100 if they're caught. I would like to raise that fine up to $500, because it is really giving a very hard time for disabled people. And the last and final thing is, the holiday season's coming up, and in the past, when I was working with, helping solve the gang problem, you guys used to donate, actually up to $15,000 a year. I am asking this board if you could give me a grant for whatever amount you think would be acceptable, and I do have a 501(c)(3), and I don't know if it's through John Vianney Catholic Church, I don't know if that affect you donating money to my organization, but this is what it's at.
Thank you, Jim. There are a couple of lights on. Commissioner Duda?
Thank you, James. I'm sorry to hear of your recent health episodes. I so appreciate all that you do and have been doing on the streets, within the community. I have a great deal of respect for you and your work. We will be at our committee meeting after the board meeting. We're going to be talking about recommended changes. It's good timing for the General Assistance Guidelines, and I know, looking at increasing the brand, it hasn't been bumped in eight years, and I know that's one of the items that they are going to be, I believe, recommending. We'll learn a little bit more at the committee meeting today. So, you have good timing. I don't, we don't do third-party funding. I'm not sure how we can fund your parties anymore, and we don't impose fines on handicap parking. I appreciate your comments, though, and on the GA guidelines, we will take those to heart. Thank you.
And the timing's because of the dude upstairs.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes, and I too appreciate all you put into it, and your efforts and your drive. And you're 100% right. All the redevelopment downtown, North Omaha, South Omaha, has taken the affordable housing, and I wouldn't even call that affordable, the semi-affordable housing, and removed it. So, the stock, I would say, is probably depleted by 20%. Does that sound about right?
I'd say more like 50%.
50%? Okay. So, it's creating a huge hardship. And they've written some articles in the paper and national publications on this. And you can't even rent something for 500 that's decent. I was reading the want ads a couple of weeks ago, and for, not that I was looking, I was just, my wife hasn't thrown me out yet, but I was just, yeah. I do that periodically, just to keep abreast of what's available. And there's nothing.
There's nothing. And that's why one of the other things is, you know, to stop a man from any kind of employment, you hear it all the time, the taxpayers are saying, "We're tired of helping these people, giving them, supporting them." And the way Douglas County is, you're actually doing that. You're supporting them 100%, but it's not a good support. I'd like to also see if you could change, allow them to do a part-time job. And, you know, it helps agencies like myself, I actually do this, I try to get them jobs so they get off of Douglas County. But some of them, like I said, are not employable. So, if you could allow them to, say, have a part-time job, a certain amount of money they could raise without kicking them off the Douglas County Assistant, that would be another great thing.
And many of them do that already in what they call the black labor market, you know, under the table, I'll work for cash. And I used to hire a lot of people who were on probation, parole, had mental illness, and I, one day I went up to a guy who's panhandling outside my store. I said, "Why don't you just get a job?" Because he was there all the time, he was living underneath the 16th Street viaduct. He says, "Would you hire me?" I said, "Well, let's talk." He says, "My first qualification is I'm a murderer. I killed two people." That makes it hard to get a job.
Possession of a gun or a felony is, makes, we punish them, and then they get out of jail during their time, then we punish them again, because felons cannot get jobs in this country. And Omaha is probably one of your better cities for doing, helping people with felonies.
And something, a word I never heard of, was voluntary poverty. Voluntary poverty regarding child support payments when somebody is in jail. Being put in jail is considered voluntary poverty. And that's a strange way of looking at it, I think.
Oh, I agree. Like my, I deal with a lot of people coming out of prison, they have child support. You know, some of these are 40, 60, $70,000 back payments. And myself, working all my life, to pay $70,000 in back child support, that's simply impossible. So, now, we're taking people out of jail that can't get a $17 an hour job, and saying, "Well, if you don't pay child support, we're going to put you back in jail." And they say, "Well, we'll make arrangement on the payment." Any arrangement of payment of $7.15 an hour, rent, food, and stuff, there is no extra money to pay. And we have a system that helps women and children, it's called welfare. And so, if we could get rid of this stupid law saying, "If you're incarcerated, then your child supports keep going, going, going." A guy living a year in a jail, that's a lot of child support in that year, just because he can't work and he's in jail, so.
That is exactly the point being made. And now I remember where I heard it. It was on NPR Saturday, one of their top shows. And so, thank you. Again, we appreciate what you're doing.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I think most of the questions I had have been asked and answered, but Mr. Parsons, thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, James. And we'll take that under consideration at our committee meeting. Commissioner Morgan?
I was going to ask, I believe it's a city that sets fines for handicapped parking. I mean, I'd support seeing it go to 200 or 300, I don't know about 500, but if that helps you when you talk to them, and I'm not sure with the feeling of the rest of the board, I think 100's too little. So, you, are you okay with that? So, I think you could say you came before the board and were supportive of a $200, $300 increase?
Sounds good.
If that helps you.
Thank you, James.
I don't know if it's political correct, but God bless you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. Good luck with your luncheon.
It's correct.
We'll, we have no recognitions or proclamations. Citizen comments? Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Jane Trumper. I'm a resident of 5306 Isard Street. I'm president of Omaha Liberty Ladies, a group of women activists, political activists. And I'm also a new member of Nebraska Sunshine Project, which is a court watch program here in Douglas County. The reason I have come is, myself, along with 14 other people, sat in on a court case not long ago, last week as a matter of fact. We included an elected official on the learning community, as well as other citizens, some of the members of Omaha Liberty Ladies. I wanted to tell you that we all came to the same conclusion independently after we had left the courthouse, and I wanted to give you an idea of what we had observed. What happened in court, with seven attorneys in the courtroom, including guardian ad litem that had been assigned by the judge to each parent, and to the children, as well as the parents each having a personal attorney. The guardian ad litem's were for the children and each parent, and then the parents each had their own personal attorney, including some others. The judge decided not to take any testimony, including testimony regarding the parents' concern for the welfare of the children in this case. The children have been removed from The children have been removed from the home for two years. They went from high-functioning, highly-involved, top-of-their-class students to now they are in no way better off than they were. They mentally, physically, and emotionally are in much worse condition. Now, two years into the court system, the judge decided to send off four attorneys for the parents on a two-week assignment to figure out what is the role of guardian ad litem's and how are the attorneys supposed to work together based on a legal journal article discussing the role of guardian ad litem's in cases with elder adults with diminished capacity. Now, this is two years into the case. Both parents in this case are middle-aged, educated, and highly-functioning adults and have been examined by mental health professionals. And we're already on the hook as Douglas County taxpayers for close to a thousand, a hundred thousand dollars in this case. I don't know who I can present, I wanted to present the court transcript from that meeting if I can. And I also want, now, the judge in this transcript is, or in this order, is talking about incapacitated adults. I'm also including just a brief history on the education of these adults. I would like for you to know that the mother in this case has been evaluated independently by both psychologists and psychiatrists, and no mental illness was found. The father is a working physician in charge of a clinical laboratory in a hospital. He's also been examined and found to have no mental illness. The judge made claims of profound mental illness during this court case, although there has been no evidence to suggest that there is any profound mental illness. I want to make you aware of this because we all go back to this guardian ad litem issue that is going on. Back in 2009, we had a report that was done, that was given to this board. We subsequently have had the audit done by Mike Foley when he was then auditor of the state. We've had Kendall Marlowe that has come and has provided testimony and guidance. And yet, here we are with no, really, thank you for allowing the public to come up and put these matters on the record, but we need profound change and we need leadership. And the leadership has got to come from this board working together to make some changes. I don't know what to do, but I would like to say that my group and Nebraska Sunshine Project will be reporting on this on a regular basis. Our newsletter goes out to over, well over a thousand people in the state, including a lot of political offices. We are going to make this a focus because we cannot have children and families persecuted, and I use that word purposely, persecuted, in our courtrooms in Douglas County and stand for it. I will not stand for it. I have lost sleep over this case. My husband, who has been a practicing pediatric critical care physician for thirty years and has worked in multiple child abuse cases, he's losing sleep over it. This cannot happen in our county. I will not allow it to happen. And anything I can do with every fiber of my body, I will bring it to the attention of anybody who will stand still long enough to listen. So I ask for your help because, as my father always told me, when I would come up and complain to him, if you're not part of the solution, Mary Jane, then you're part of the problem. And so I ask all of you, in your capacity, to please be part of the solution and stop being part of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jane. There is a light on. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks for the time you take to attend to these matters and bring them to our attention. There is, I think, a shared concern here on the part of the county board. And about the situation surrounding entire guardian ad litem setup. And I think that it's fair to say that we're looking at taking serious measures in hand to change the way that they do business over there as much as we can. The judiciary is a separate branch of government that we don't control. And I don't know, who was the judge in this particular proceeding?
Circovich.
Judge Circovich. You know, she's empowered to do what juvenile court judges are empowered to do. That said, we have heard loud and clear the community pointing out systemic problems. And to the extent that we can take measures to make them better, we are, Commissioner Rogers' committee has had extensive deliberations on this matter. And we've had discussions among us as recently as this morning about what we do going forward strategically to make changes. And I, you know, I think it's fair to say that change is on the way. Chairman Borgeson has spent a lot of time meeting with decision-makers in Lincoln to get some statutory changes in place that will allow us to do things differently. That said, you know, the best protection of the republic is the watchfulness of its citizens.
Agreed.
And the fact that you spend time out of your day, and we know that others do as well, does not go unappreciated. We think that it's important that regular citizens take an active part in their government in order for our democracy to work. So thanks for what you do. We're hearing you. We're trying to make the changes that are in our control, recognizing that some things are not in our control.
Right.
But I appreciate you coming down here and bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Yerick?
Teresa Yerick County Attorney's Office. I simply wanted to ask, my, I have a copy of the handout that you presented to the board, and I note that it's stamped confidential. And so I simply wanted to make you aware that your submission to the county clerk will make this a part of the public, it will make it available via public records request. And I don't know if you received this document with any restrictions on its further dissemination. I can't provide you legal advice, but I simply note that there is a stamp on the top that says confidential. So I simply wanted to raise that issue for today.
I'm not a political person, so I don't know what to tell you to that, that effect. We did redact the names in this particular case.
I'm the mother. I'm the one put the stamp there.
Could you state your name and address?
I'm sorry, Commissioner. I'm sorry. My name is Catherine Yang Wong Anderson. I'm the mother of this case. I'm the one put the stamp there. It's not confidential. It's from thejustice.com. And I just put it there because I'm afraid to be put on the gag order. I have been warned so many times. I have been intimidated. I have been threatened. That's why.
Okay, thank you.
I give it to her. I just tried to.
Thank you. And just to piggyback a little bit onto the GAL conversation, I should have, hopefully by the end of this week, a proposal to bring to the board to ask Mr. Kendall Marlowe to come back.
Oh, that's wonderful.
And be our facilitator in establishing what we do next in providing those services. We have probably three or four options that have been laid on the table. We're leaning one way during one discussion and another way during another. And he was very instrumental in bringing up a lot of good points when he was here before the board. So we're working on an agreement that I can bring forward to use him in that capacity as we move through the ideas that are out there on how to provide this.
And as citizen activist, we're here to help any way that we can and to facilitate whatever changes that you deem appropriate so that we can have some positive change here in our county. Because I know that you don't want this problem any more than we do.
No.
It's really abhorrent.
Yes. And I got to say, I commend you all for the court watch program. I was a part of the Domestic Violence Coordinating Council back when it actually, from its conception forward. And one of the programs that we built within that organization was a court watch program. And it was really about the victims in domestic violence cases and how they were being treated in the courtroom, not only by the judiciary, but by prosecutors and such. So it was a very successful program. And so I strongly believe in court watch programs, so I commend you all for doing it. And I commend, actually Laura McCormick, who brought it forward. You guys have done a tremendous job, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I'm sorry.
Hi, Catherine. That's okay.
Hi, I'm the mother of this case, and I'm sorry. I come to this country twenty-six years ago to study, to go to grad school. This is the greatest country. My husband and I both are students, come to this country. We, I come to this country with thirty dollars. We work very hard. And, I'm sorry, twenty years ago, my husband get an exception from the Creighton Pathology Residency Program. He studied there. That's where my children was born here, and we become U.S. citizen here. And, you know, I truly believe this is the greatest country. You work hard, you can make it. My husband now, he is the chief of huge operation. He's in charge of hundreds of physician and also staff technician and work for the VA system. And he's a federal employee for the Department of Defense. Before this happened, I would never believe this could happen to us because, I mean, this is America, you know? This justice, I truly believe this justice here. And we never have any problem with law, and I never drink, we never do drug, and we never have any misdemeanor or felony, we never have any problem, you know? It all started when I find my older daughter's cell phone supposed to be missed, missing, and sexting. So I do buy the book, I contact police, report it, because previously I have already, you know, have suspicion there's an improper relationship with this male teacher. So October seventh night, I find the cell phone, I immediately contact police, I have all the record. And I am a critical care nurse, and also I got a two master degree. One is from UNMC, a family nurse practitioner program. And I work in critical care and ER, so I know the procedure, how to report it, this kind of improper sexual relationship. And then after that, I have no idea. I do buy the book, and then the next day she go to school. Unknown to me, later I find it out reading from the sheriff's report. She go directly to, throughout the night, she has been, my older one has been in contact with this male teacher. The next morning, when I drop her off, I told her, we love you, you're the youngest one, we will protect you, you're the victim here. So I drop her off at Middle West High School. And then from the sheriff's report, later I learned she went directly to the male teacher, and that male teacher brought her to council office to claim abuse and neglect. That's where the whole nightmare started. And I truly believe justice, so I feel I have nothing to hide. So when police come to my house, I talk to them, they are very nice. Lieutenant Gentile interview my children, the younger children, and she claimed there's no abuse, no neglect. And my house, the CPS went to my home later. Oh, Lieutenant Gentile decided it's safe for her to stay in-house. And also Sergeant Pen, I'm sorry, I don't know how to, yeah. And also, you know, we separately interviewed, and also during the night CPS also come to my house, searched my entire house. And I volunteer, you know, I truly believe I have nothing to hide, you know? So they searched my entire house and talked to my younger one, decided it's safer to stay. My husband just moved, you know, he relocated because St. Joseph Hospital has some financial problems, so he got better off by VA taxes. So we're in the process of moving, and then the whole thing just collapsed. The next day, I sent my younger one to school, and I remember, I'm in the bakery, I'm sorry, parking lot, I received a phone call, my younger one was taken away. Against her will, against her wish, she, for the past two years, she tell everyone she want to go home. And I'm sorry. She starved twice in this country. She's, she literally starving to death, slowly to death, twice. One is for forty-five days. She lying on the floor on the foster home, starved seizure, lost consciousness, we file motion. I literally beg Judge Circovich for transfer. My husband has been a physician for thirty years. We have the means, we have the financial resources. We are willing to pay for everything. We can pay cash. It was declined. My younger one was forced on Medicaid, at which I told NFC worker, I say, this is a fraud because we are capable, and I don't want to use taxpayers' money. No, we will, my children was forced to live on the Medicaid and on the welfare. And my husband and I is willing, I'm sorry. I grew up, you know, I truly believe you work hard, you depend on yourself. For me, for my husband, it's a shame to use taxpayers' money, but for the past two years, my children was forced to live on Medicaid and welfare. And my relative, who is Christian, they went to the Omaha Chinese Christian Church. They are willing to taking my children for free because my cousin say she refused to accept any payment from the government because she say, we are able, we are capable, we don't want other people. But NFC say the Chinese family is traumatic to children, so they refuse the payment, placement with my children, with my relative. I know, it's, everything I say here is unbelievable. Every time I tell people, people just say, it can't be, this is America, it can't be happen. So I'm a critical care nurse, and I also work ER back in Maryland twenty-one years ago. It's, the trauma center is very busy, so we have like recording all the time, so we dictate all the time. So I start recording, of course, I first consult with attorney, I say, if it's legal, I want to make sure everything go by law. I was told it's legal. So everything I say here, I have a recording, I have documentation, and I have email stated Chinese family is traumatic, the children can be placed with Chinese family. So my younger one starved twice, literally starving twice. I beg everyone, I literally, I contact NFC each level, I, you know, supervisor, director, and then Dave New, the CEO, and then the DHHS. Nobody is willing to help. So she starved twice, literally, you know, seizure, everything. And she's very healthy before taking to state custody. She never have any problem. Both my kids rank number one at Middle West High School. They never have, they are honor student. And I send them, when they, I truly believe God, so I send them to the church, the first Methodist preschool, and then Catholic Sacred Heart Academy. So, and also they involving Girl Scout from the Daisy troop, the youngest troop. Never, we never have any problem until the state take them away. It's catastrophe. My younger one was sexual abused, so I pleaded to the judge, I pleaded to, I literally beg everyone, please move her out of that placement. I was labeled as mental illness. So after fourteen months, the judge out of nowhere start accusing my husband of a mental illness. My husband, every day, he do a lot of consultation because he's the interim chief and also the chief, a huge operation at VA hospital. So every day he decided, other people's, make decision regarding other people's life and death. And we were labeled in this courtroom by judge who has no medical degree stated we are mentally ill just because we file motion to protect our children. Every time we file motion, my children was sexual abused, we file motion, was labeled we're mentally ill. She still stay there, and then we are willing to provide everything for our children. We feel, you know, it's a fraud to use taxpayers' money. But NFC just completely tried to cut us off and put my, both of my children on the independent living path. And I want to provide my- And I want to provide my older children, you know, she is asking for clothes. And the judge Circovich issue order, I'm not able, I cannot give anything to my children, not even a birthday card, not even a penny to my children. They have to depend on themselves, on welfare. So my older one work at Walmart. She work 20 or 40 hours and we just say, just can't be a young kid all by herself. And she's taking six bus every day, go to UNO. We say we are willing to buy a car for her, we are willing to pay for everything. No, we are not allowed to. We can, they try everything possible to cut us off. My younger one, she was, the second time she starved to death, she was sent to Arizona. I went there because she almost died. So I went there, tried to participate family therapy and also tried to have visitation with her. And everything go very well and all of nowhere, the NFC caseworker say, I need to take care of my own mental health need before I can see my younger children. So I end up coming back from Arizona, I come back and then out of nowhere they tell me, I think they maybe figure something, you know, they shouldn't do that. So they call me, say, you know what, I have a visit within 30 minutes. I say I'm in Omaha. So I starting drive back to Arizona. And then they use this incident as my profound mental illness because I'm very healthy. I never have, you know, I can drive, you know, long distance, I don't need, you know, she's my daughter, I want to see her. And was also labeled as a profound mental illness just because I want to see my younger children. Younger child, I'm sorry, my English. And I was voluntary, I was, in the past two years, I was humiliated, I was sitting in the courtroom. Every hearing to hear about my profound mental illness. So I voluntarily tested by Dr. Shea, he is the director of the Adult Psychiatric Service at Emmanuel Hospital. And he concluded I have no mental illness and also tested, evaluated by, voluntarily by another psychologist. He reached the same conclusion, I don't have any mental illness. And for the past three generation of my family, we don't have any mental illness. And also everything we valued was labeled as child abuse and abnormal. I truly believe work hard, you know, I just say several time, we come to this country with $30. My husband have more, $200, I have 30. You work hard, you can make it. This is a great country with so many opportunity, you know? And that's what we pass to our children, you know, do well at school, you know? Be someone. But all this value was labeled as abnormal, abusive. Because they doing well at school as also as evidence of abuse, child abuse. And also I teach my daughter, I have two daughter, tell them to respect yourself, to dress decently. You present yourself is how you view yourself, how you value yourself. And also was labeled as mental illness. They were, my older one was sent to Urban Center with juvenile delinquent. And nobody told us, she was sent there six months, she was offered drug, she was offered sex there. And I was told I have mental illness because I'm concerned because she was offered drug and sex by juvenile delinquent. And the next part, it's very hard for anyone to believe, but everything is in the court transcript. I'm willing to provide all the court transcript. During the trial on March 28th, the therapist from Reliable Rock Counseling Service, Judy Chulman testified in the open court with all, everything was recorded. She stated my family, you know, my children and my home, they never exposed to drug. So this is abnormal and it is normal to be exposed to sex and drug. And Judge Circovich is there. The county attorney, Amy Chuckman is there. So everything we valued, everything conservative value was labeled as abusive. So my older one was, she was mixed up with all this juvenile delinquent for six months. I literally begged every single one of them. I even went to, during the court hearing, I begged Judge Circovich, I say, my children has been offered sex and drug. And it's all on the transcript, Judge Circovich say, say, oh, it's, you know, it's like I'm just, you know, I need to take care of my mental health need. And my children was sexual abused, so we file motion, I covered that already. And then nobody take any action. And then this year she was sent to independent living for a young kid. And she was sexually trafficked. We file, nobody did anything. My husband, after the residency, he was retained at Creighton University to teach, to talk there as assistant professor. For our children, my husband worked at 24, but we have a house all the way 128, 180 street. So every day my husband travel through the Omaha, just for the safety of the children. But my younger one was sent to 24th and Lake Street to attend the independent living workshop. Even we are willing to pay for everything. She, both of my children, we work very hard and you can see, I come from poverty. And I'm proud of it because it give me a great work ethic. My mom always say, you know, work hard. So we have enough resources, they don't have to worry about anything. But they insist to cut us off, so she was sent to the workshop, she was sex trafficking. Nothing was done, even to today, nothing has been done. And we file motion with Judge Circovich, it happened on March 14th. So we file motion on March 31st, emergency ex parte motion. Judge Circovich refused to hear, denied the request. And during the next hearing, I was labeled as mental illness again. Because we brought up this emergency motion. And no, no police report. Laura is very nice, she check the Omaha police, there's absolutely no report, nothing been done. And we file another motion, ask her to move out of that home. And Judge Circovich refused to hear that matter. Again, labeled me and my husband with profound, and she moved to the next step, profound mental illness. So still nothing been done. And then, I'm sorry, she was trafficked again. Nothing was done. In the past two years, I never receive one single police report. And we are not allowed to know anything. And during the last, the most recent meeting with the caseworker, I brought up. They even, they told me sex traffic is consensual, she is only 16. I went to FBI website, I looked it up, this is a federal crime. How could this happen with all this attorney, seven taxpayer paid attorney, sitting there, they are all the expert. Their job, their training is child protection, they know much better than me. How could this happen in the past two years? This happened including Deputy County Attorney, Ms. Amy Chuckman. How she consider and know my children has been sexual abused, trafficked twice without doing anything? And I wrote several affidavit, I pleading for investigation, protection of my children. Ms. Amy Chuckman never did a thing. And Judge Circovich never did a thing, continue label me and my husband both as mental illness. And the guardian lineman, Ms. Janine Yoshino, she continually try her best, tried to cut us off. And now both of my children was put in the guardianship. Even my younger one, she's 17 years old, she told everyone she want to go home, she's not afraid. She want to go home and I'm sorry to say this, she doesn't want to stay in Nebraska anymore, even this is her birthplace. She say I want to be out of Nebraska. She want to go to my husband, he is in charge of such a huge operation. And he was accused of neglect, I was accused abuse because he's in Texas. This guardian lineman, Ms. Yoshino, put my 17 years old daughter on guardianship, independent living, instead of reunify with the father. And Judge Circovich changed the permanency plan from reunification to guardianship without any hearing. I am not make this up, I can't even make this up because it's just unbelievable. I mean, she break so many, the most fundamental US Constitution, freedom of speech, without a hearing. I'm sorry, without a hearing, nobody complain. Judge Circovich out of nowhere ordered, I can't contact any service provider. Because previously asking for help for my children. So I can't contact caseworker, I can't take visiting worker. So for example, during one visit, I don't know where's the location of the supervised visitation. So I literally driving between the Oak View and Shadow Lake. Both, I keep driving because I don't know where's the visit. And sometime I wait three hours in front of middle public library, just waiting for my children for visit. I can't call anyone, I never have any felony, any misdemeanor. For the past 26 years, I have too speeding taken, I'm sorry. But I never, it's, I drive five over 10, I mean, I'm sorry, 10 over the speed limit. And that's, we can't contact anyone, we can't, we can't contact school. My husband can't contact school either. And the school told, middle public school told us, they have no problem for us to contact them. And before taking to state custody, my children both are honor student, ranked number one Middle West High School. My younger one, my older one also the state champion for journalism. My younger one was featured on the Omaha World Herald for outstanding performance. And now they both fail at school. My younger one, missing after she taken to the state custody, she start, she refused to eat, she want to go home. She lost weight and the rest of the entire school year, she didn't attend any school. And I literally begged everyone, I say, I truly believe education. That's what my parents tell me, go to America, study, education is the savior, can save you. So we did, we truly believe education, disbelief also been labeled as mental illness. I just don't understand, I want to ask county attorney, Don Klein. Why parents missing 20 days of school, they will be dragged into the courtroom? Why my children in the state custody under the county attorney watch? She miss almost entire school year, nobody care. And we did submit it as a court exhibit. Ms. Amy Chuckman, the county attorney, she know my kids miss so many school. How could this happen? I didn't make it up, I have all the evidence. Why nobody care? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I use so much time.
That's fine, Catherine, we appreciate you being courageous to tell us your story. And again, we will continue to work on the issues as best as we can. But appreciate you being able to come forward and tell your story to us that we know, so thank you.
I'm sorry, I just want to add one more thing. I file official complaint with Department of Justice. I truly believe this is corruption and also a federal lawsuit is in the process of being filed.
Okay, thank you, Cap.
Thanks.
Commissioner Morgan?
And I'm just wondering, is it appropriate? I know there's been a lot of names here to make sure at some point we hear from some of the other people and talk about this. And I'm not sure it's appropriate, but I just feel like, you know, we ought to maybe ask questions, that kind of thing. And set a date, a couple of weeks that we have. If they wanted to be a public thing to talk about this and get some answers, know where we can do, should do. And hear other sides of this. I'm not sure that's appropriate. Chris, some of the rest of you can correct me or whatever.
Commissioner Borgeson, I guess what I would ask.
Could you state your date?
Oh, sorry, Laura McCormick, Nebraska Sunshine Project. Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. I guess what I would like is, I have some material that I would like to share that relates directly to the costs of guardian ad litem, something that I know that you know, I've been very concerned about. And I also have information, let's say, that relates to this assigned reading that the judge mandated these seven lawyers prepare this brief. There actually is material contained in Nebraska legal books that relate to this. So all of this mystifies me, but in the interests of time and to give other people fair opportunity to engage in dialogue. What I was hoping is that maybe we could set a specific time and then we could bring materials that we think would be of interest to you and that would also allow the other folks that are interested in talking about this, an opportunity to engage. I'm just offering.
Okay.
Because I mean, people are here and willing to speak, but I just didn't know what you might want to do. Because I think they have some additional written material.
I think that would be a good idea and I'll work with you on that after the meeting.
Okay, and I would just like to say, I think that Catherine, Catherine almost made me cry. And I think she did an amazing job standing at this podium, talking about how her children have been harmed. And it is really difficult to do this, so.
Thank you, Laura.
Yeah, I'd like to see a set of time. Do you think it's appropriate where we can listen and really take the time?
Okay, thank you all.
Hi, my name is Lori Flynn. I have spoken before this board before. I know there's some new faces, so I had a case up in the court, my court, my case was bad. Case is horrific. It is absolutely horrific because, I mean, they are destroying this family. That changes who families are. My family will never be the same. And my case was a case that was just, I wasn't adjudicated, they let it go. They made a mistake and they kept my kids for six months. And my children and my family will never be the same. They are, what they're doing to this family, again, mine was bad, this is horrific.
Thank you, Laura. Anyone else? Hi, Melanie.
Hi, Melanie Williams, Smotherman Family Advocacy Movement. And I'm just going to raise two issues. One is, again, the GAL issue, assignments to adults. We've talked about this here when I've raised, I think I first really talked about it with Lori Morford Flynn's case. This particular judge seems to have a propensity for assigning GALs to competent adults. And it's at the quote unquote discretion of the court. But I think not only we as taxpayers should question this practice, but from a liberty interest, from a justice interest, the notion that an adult and especially a parent needs another adult to sit and speak for you and, you know, question your credibility as a parent and as a competent adult is outrageous. It's something that we as taxpayers are paying for, but it's also something that we as parents find very offensive. In this particular case, as you've heard, this couple, these parents have some of the highest credentials that we could ever ask to come before anyone, to speak about the inappropriateness of assigning guardians ad litem to speak on your behalf. In this case, the judge feels threatened by the question of this topic and she has assigned all seven attorneys to take two weeks to research this topic and the appropriateness. She admonished them, she lectured to them. And our question is, how can attorneys represent clients through two years of litigation? And then all of a sudden, we're being told that they don't know their own roles or the purpose of a guardian ad litem or they need a homework assignment on the taxpayers dime? I mean, this is, this is something that should be raising alarms for everyone. The other issue is the issue of language interpretation in the courtroom. As you could hear, Catherine has done a very good job speaking English in the best way she can. Her husband speaks less proficient English. They were appointed or had initially an interpreter come to the courtroom on their very first hearing who spoke a completely different dialect from either of these parents. He indicated after the hearing, there was no way that he could successfully interpret what was going on for this family. And they were never offered any more interpretation services in the courtroom. Throughout the two years of this case, serious. Throughout the two years of this case, serious things have happened to these children, as you've heard. And there has been a trial. And there has been an appeals process. And then somehow, the court-appointed attorneys forgot to attach a filing fee to the Supreme Court appeal, making the Supreme Court reject their appeal. There's so much to this case that's just like Twilight Zone. But my question is, how we can say that justice has been served, that these parents are being provided the minimum services and legal representation that we would all expect when we hear these things are happening in this courtroom?
Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Again, thank you, and I'll be in touch with you all. We'll go to committees, the first being the Finance, the Budget Report as presented, unless there's anything else. We've already taken up the other item. We move to Community Services. There's approved the new Pheasant Point landfill fee for the frozen load removals. And I don't see can't. From the land, I know what they're here from the land. I didn't know if you guys wanted to talk on this or can't, or is there a motion to approve? It's pretty straightforward.
Second.
No questions or comments? Please vote. Item two, approval of the annual CPI adjustments to Pheasant Point landfill rates. Is there a motion to approve? Questions or comments? Please vote. And the last agenda item for Community Services is a reduction of the 2015.
I'm sorry, say again?
We didn't register a vote for you on that last one, did you?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I did vote. I tried to anyhow.
Last agenda item is reduction of the 2015-16 Visitors Improvement Funds awarded to Exarban Foundation for the High School Rodeo and reallocation of those funds to the Douglas County Fair Board. Is there a motion to approve? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Going forward, I attended the rodeo, I think, as Commissioner Kraft and Duda did, and it was spectacular. So, going forward, are we going to have that same quality of a rodeo under the Douglas County Fair Board?
If I may answer that, I think you will see it improve every year, should the county decide to continue the county fair. And we need to have a community service meeting on this issue and discussing it, since Exarban terminated the contract with the county to manage the fair.
Well, if it's that quality or better, that's really an achievement, and I commend the people. The one thing that I would like to see maybe going forward is if we could work with some of the local educators to try to develop a team of Douglas County kids to actually participate in the rodeo. I mean, it was great to see kids from all over Nebraska and really the Midwest there. But we have a couple of young rodeoers in our family, and I know that my brother Tom would love to see his girls competing in the Douglas County rodeo and not have to drive 350 miles out to compete in the Hooker County rodeo. So, if we could work with you, Commissioner, and the Fair Board people, and maybe include some of the local educators, see if we could put together a team, I'd be very interested in doing that.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. I think they're going to have to earn their way into it, because to qualify for this rodeo, you have to be a state champion. There were six states represented, and our Fair Board, I'm an aw of these volunteers that we have, and the fantastic job they're doing. And they have plans next year of adding two more states. They hope to have eight states represented here. So, it's a real quality thing. This is kind of a growing pain that we're separating from the Exarban Foundation here, but I view it as a friendly separation. I mean, I, we've just kind of outgrown them and with zero property tax dollars in our fair. I think it is exciting what this Fair Board has done and continues to do. They have great dreams.
Commissioner Kraft?
And we do. We hope to expand the fair. We need to look for a new venue, instead of having it at the Century Link Center. We hope to create a national event with the high school rodeo for those states that do have champions. And I think most states have champions on some of these rodeo events. Out of sixty-six eligible participants, we had sixty-four register and attend, vying for thousand, for eleven thousand dollar scholarships in eleven different events. My favorite was, was it called goat wrestling?
Goat roping.
Goat roping.
I was cheering for the goats.
And for those of you who don't know, Commissioner Duda's wife raises goats, so his opinion is biased. Thank you.
There is a motion and a second. No other questions or comments? Please vote.
That was a really fun event.
That was great.
It was great.
Next is the Human Resources. The first item is the Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service as presented, unless there are questions or comments. Item two is the Weekly CAO Report on Staff Assaults.
There's nothing to report.
Item three is Legislative, and again, we'll be continuing to gather any legislation ideas that are talked about here or in committee and then bring that back. Item four is the County Employee Wellness Program Presentation from Kathy Adair. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kathy Adair, Employee Benefits Wellness Coordinator. At the last HR Committee meeting, Commissioner Borgeson asked if I would give a short little presentation on our wellness program and kind of where we are, where we would like to go, and how those things are happening in the wellness world. I'll address our program we have currently and where we're at with numbers, and then talk about what we're looking at for 2016. Currently, our wellness program with Vavari is a 200-point goal wellness program, meaning that individuals have to earn 200 points for doing different wellness activities. Two of those activities are requirements, biometric testing and the member health assessment survey that is right online on the Vavari portal. And currently, each individual has a unique login, so if you are insured on United Healthcare, whether it's the PPO or the HSA, you're eligible to participate. We included spouses to participate, beginning in January of 15. Currently, there are 2,065 employees that are actually eligible to participate in the program, 891 spouses. Of those numbers, 503 unique logins. So that means 503 different individuals have logged into the Vavari site and started participating in that wellness program. As of today, actually, would have been last Wednesday, 282 of those 503 have earned their 200-point goal. Earning your 200-point goal, whether you're a employee eligible or a spouse eligible, earns you a $150 Visa gift card if those points are earned by December 1st. So, 282 have earned those points. There are 226 earned them last year. We started the program July last year. It just ran for six months, and we had 225 that earned their points. So we're up a little bit on that. 200 of those employees of the 282 have earned over 200 points. We offered kind of an incentive so that if you earned your 200 points, you didn't stop doing wellness activities, in that the top five individuals over their 200 points will earn an additional $75 Visa gift card for their extra efforts. 378, and I know I'm giving you a lot of numbers, but the, it is, it's impressive from the previous year. 378 have completed the two requirements, the biometrics and the member health assessment. And those are the two big measurements that an individual that participates in the program from year to year, that they can see hopefully improve by doing different activities, or if that is not improving, that they can do some other additional types of wellness things that may help them. 264 individuals have completed the preventive care compliance, 342 have the tobacco affidavit, where they basically go out and fill out a inquiry that they don't use tobacco. We've had 63 employees that do a peer-to-peer challenge. So, I could challenge Commissioner Duda on some kind of wellness activity, and then we are competing together. So, they earn points by just doing a peer-to-peer. So we had 63 of those people that did that, so that was quite fun as well.
If you don't smoke cigars, you'll probably win.
I probably will win then. So that's really kind of our program now. It's still not too late for employees that are not part or have not logged in to participate and earn those points. There's a variety of ways that you can do that. So, there's still time. The points have to be earned by December 1st. And with good hope, now I know how to order these Visa gift cards, we can have the gift cards out probably before Christmas, so it'll be a nice little incentive. And if you're a husband-wife team and you participate, it's a $300 Visa gift card, $150 each. So it is, it is a good incentive. What we would like to propose for 2016, kind of knowing the program and almost a year and a half into it, we did include the retirees as part of the eligibility. Unfortunately, they are a harder group to get communication to, and the response, there's six retirees out of 329 that participate. So, we pay that monthly fee for them to be part of the program, even if they don't participate. It is cost savings if we eliminate the retiree group, starting January of 16. It's about $400 savings a month. So, we would propose, at least for the 2016 year, that we eliminate the retiree group at this time. The other addition that we would like to is add our health coaching. I get calls from time to time, individuals that are participating, "Okay, well, I've got my numbers, they're not that good. What do I do now?" And really, the next step is health coaching. On the health coaching side, they bill that two different ways. They bill it a per employee per month, or they bill it a one-time participant. And our suggestion, at least at this point, is to do it a per participant. It costs $125 per participant per year. So, if we have a $400 savings already on the retiree side, we'd have to have at least three, maybe four people that would participate in the per-participant coaching and still be paying what we're currently paying. So, we would suggest to do that. What the coaching benefit will do, that Vavari will offer, first of all, their bachelor degrees, their certified health wellness coaches, and they have an oversight from a chief clinical officer or a chief medical officer. They specialize in weight management, nutrition, fitness, stress management, tobacco sensation, and there are some other programs that they will be able to offer, those employees that would reach out to them. So, we would suggest that we add that to our 2016 program. And some of the other changes that we would do on the program would be a two-tier incentive. Currently now, if you earn your points by December 1st, you'll get your Visa gift card sometime the end of December. To try to pull more members or eligible individuals to participate, we're suggesting a two-tier incentive. So, first of all, the two requirements, biometric testing and the member health assessment. If an individual would complete those, an employee and/or their spouse, we would award them a $100 Visa gift card immediately. We would try to pay those out on a quarterly basis, so that I'm not ordering Visa gift cards every day, but we would do that immediately rather than waiting for the whole year before they get their incentive. The remainder of their points would have to be earned by December 1st, and we would pay them the other $100 Visa gift card. So we think that that might bring some more people into participating, and that's really what our goal is. We hope to do more communication with Commissioner Borgeson and trying to get out to the departments and explain the program a little bit more to obtain more individual participation. We will be offering biometrics, just like we did last year. We will do it two times this next calendar year, in March and April, and then again in August and September, giving people an opportunity to get their biometrics right on sight. We will have three employer challenges that are kind of spaced out throughout the calendar year, one in February, one in June, one in September. So, those are some of the suggestions that we have for the 2016 year. I think you have a resolution to eliminate the eligibility for the retirees and the coaching, since those are two new suggestions, recommendations that we are making. And that kind of summarizes at least the Vavari Wellness Program. I did kind of want to touch on just a few little things that we've done regarding wellness. We brought the Mamieu Van, which was located right out here on Farnham. Monday, it was over at the Health Center, between the Health Center and the Youth Center. We did that in April, and we did it in October. I think they can take about 30 appointments a day, and they were filled like with, immediately. So, that's very reassuring, and lots of comments of individuals that it was really easy and convenient, took 20 minutes maybe out of their day, right here at work. We have a flu shot clinic coming up on October 29th, here in the Civic Center on 702, 8:30 to 10:30. And then we will offer it again November 4th, from 11:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. And probably the last thing I'll mention is, open enrollment is right around the corner, a week from Friday it starts. We're stuffing letters as we speak today that that information will go out into employees. I think we're in our fourth full-time year of self-service. We've been doing self-service for about six years, but was very limited on the first two, so we're going into the fourth year. So, last year was pretty good. We hope that this year will be even better and more self-service. So, that's all I have today.
Well, thank you, Kathy. And the, one of the goals for this next year is to increase the participation of the program from the employees, and so we're hoping that some of our conversations that we have will help that. So, I'll do the peer-to-peer challenge and challenge all of you who are Commissioners and on the insurance to sign up for the wellness program.
It's interesting that there are those that continue to participate, but I have a couple of individuals that have challenged each other without them knowing it to be the top person with most points. And 300, I think 85 is the most points one person has, and she's, it's kind of on a back and forth between these two employees as who's going to get that top spot. But the top five people will earn that additional incentive, so it's kind of interesting. So, thank you very much, especially for your support.
And see, so those that are on the insurance could be the leaders here from the board. So, show the employees, see who can be first. You like competing, Claire.
Sure.
Thank you, Kathy. Number eight. Number eight is the resolution, or number five is the resolution approving the addendum to the agreement with Vavari to administer the county's wellness program. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? And we do have need for an executive session for labor negotiation issues.
And litigation.
And litigation. Is there, huh?
Can I make a request to add in there item? In addition to litigation and personnel, and ask specifically legal advice regarding future compliance with open meetings.
Okay. And then Health and Human Services Committee is scheduled immediately following the County Board in room nine oh three.
Nine oh three, and it is my intent that we have about no more than a five-minute break between when we come out of exec session and the committee convenes. It should be a relatively short committee meeting.
Okay. All right. Is it, is there a motion in a second to go in?
Oh, yes. Yeah. I'm sorry. You'll hear it better if we make it. Joe? Okay, I'll, yes. All right. No, it's exit.
Bups.
Bups.
Are you doing Kirk's thing?
Yeah, we give it outside.
No, how long for him, huh?
Motion passes.
With brotherhood from sea to shining sea. Ah, 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 ah.